Good morning, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get started, so if you wanted to find a seat, now's the time. And again, thank you for being here, welcome. I know we've got a few heavy proclamation order today, so we'll get that at the beginning of the meeting, we'll get those out of the way, but I appreciate everybody being here. If everybody could stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pete Darmo.
At this time, we take a moment of silence for individual prayer, reflection, or meditation. We take this time to honor and remember our first responders and the men and women in our military who keep us safe and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. And additionally, please remember the over 200 victims of Hurricane Milton and some thoughts to keep Florida safe as Hurricane Milton approaches. This is the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners. It is October 7th, 2024. We started at 9:01 a.m. We have an abbreviated commission today. Ms. Pennington and Mr. Sullivan are excused, and so with us today, Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner O'Brien and myself will take care of the business we need to today. We have a couple of modifications to the agenda. I just want to note, we had item 8A, the approval of a resolution pursuant to section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code, authorizing the issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds. That item was updated and the items were reposted on October 2nd to the agenda online. And we also have added the ratification of Flagler County proclamation declaring local state of emergency for Tropical Storm Milton, which is now Hurricane Milton, was signed Sunday, October 6th, 2024. It's effective at noon today. Those modifications, I'll take a motion and a second to approve those modifications.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve those modifications.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner O'Brien. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Alright, a few announcements. Our Flagler County Citizens Academy registration is now closed. Don't worry, we'll do it again. If you happen to miss this time, we'll keep doing the Citizens Academy. It's a great program, and hopefully if you miss this time, you'll be able to do the next one. And also, we want to remind everybody to visit FlaglerCounty.gov to view our transparency dashboards. Specifically, this time, we have an opening on the Public Safety Coordinating Council, so you'll find that under the Citizens Advisory Board portal. And that vacancy is for a member to serve on the council who's a family member of a primary consumer of community-based mental health or abuse treatment services in our area. For further information or to apply, you can also contact Sherri Gopi with the, she's the executive assistant to Sheriff Staley. Sheriff Staley is the chair of that council. Upcoming meetings, workshop on Monday, October 21st at 1:00 p.m., and the next regular meeting is Monday, October 21st at 5:00 p.m. Alright, so we will move on to our first item under recognitions, proclamations, and presentations, and that's a recognition, and we'll have Chief Tucker come up for a Flagler County Fire Rescue Life Saving Award. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the commission. Again, Michael Tucker, Flagler County Fire Chief. It is an honor to be here, especially when we get to do things like this. So, you know, day in and day out, the members of Flagler County Fire Rescue respond to all sorts of emergencies. Some of them are low in acuity, you know, not that severe, but the citizens are just at a point where they don't have an answer. And one of the things that I think I've realized in 40 years of doing this job is that when the citizens are out of answers, they know who to call, and they call the fire department. So, you know, most of the situations are lower acuity, but from time to time, we do run those that are very, very, you know, severe and very significant. And today, we want to present a couple of life-saving awards to some of our staff. And in one of these situations, we actually have the survivor who is here as well, and we want to give them the opportunity to speak to you and for him to show his appreciation to our crew members as well. He is just beyond himself in expressing his appreciation. So, you know, the first one, you know, I want to present is actually to two of our younger firefighters, firefighter paramedics. And both these gentlemen, firefighter paramedic Bo Krutoff and firefighter paramedic Dylan Cronk, are actually graduates of our Flagler Palm Coast Fire Leadership Academy. And in addition to being graduates of that academy, where they came out as firefighter EMTs, they're now serving as firefighter paramedics. They are now both rescue supervisors, have taken on supervisory roles, you know. So, it is a pretty neat story, you know, to tell. Our program has proven quite successful, and we're at a point where people are calling from across the state to want to know, how do we do things like this? You know, so, just a little background on their call. On March 14th of 2024, Rescue 21 responded to a medical call with reports of CPR in progress. Upon arrival, the wife on the scene was attempting CPR on a family member. Crews from Rescue 21, as well as one of our lieutenants, John Moskowitz, entered the home, provided high-quality CPR and ventilations, as well as full supportive advanced life support care. Crews continued this high-quality CPR until they received what we call ROSC, which is returner spontaneous circulation. And then the patient was transported to the hospital, had a very successful, you know, outcome. You know, so we're pretty proud of them, and so today, I want to present them with their life-saving award. As long as I have them in the right order, I will. He was so close to me, I couldn't see him. And then, obviously, Bo Krutoff. And while that one was a pretty cool incident, you know, the next one was pretty spectacular, you know, as well. And this just proves from time to time that this is more than just, you know, the emergency crews that respond directly to the incident. It involves more than just the firefighter paramedics who deliver, you know, the care. This incident was one that involved a team, the collaborative approach that we started with the telecommunicator, you know, from the Flagler County Sheriff's Office, and all the way through to our crews, you know, on scene. You know, so, on August 19th, our crews responded to James Holland Park for cardiac arrest of a 61-year-old male on the tennis courts. Our Flagler County firefighter paramedics, Dave Dufek and Lena Malzahn, were able to achieve returner spontaneous circulation, you know. But that also started with the telecommunicator, Whitney Zwazwa, you know, who provided high-quality instructions, you know, to the bystanders on the scene on how to do CPR and to make sure it continued until we got on scene. But even before that, a bystander, friend of Mr. Andrew Bates, initiated CPR and continued that until the arrival of our crews. It's not just about the things that we do on the ambulance. It starts with the citizens who want to learn CPR and can initiate CPR, and it continues through that chain until it's the telecommunicator who has the ability to continue to keep that person calm, to keep those people calm, and to give us good instructions prior to arrival. So it's an entire chain, you know, of events. You know, so before I present the awards, I think I'd like to ask Mr. Bates a few months stepping up and expressing his appreciation as well. And I'll get the rest of these.
Okay, thank you. Just state your name and speak right into that mic. Thank you, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. Andrew Bates. Yeah, it was August 19th, and, yeah, I got a little... I was just finishing playing tennis. I dropped to the ground. They called 911, and a nurse from the pickleball in the middle came over and checked my pulse, and I was flightlined. They started CPR and then kept me going, then my friend Scott, or my friend Steve came over and finished the CPR. And then they waited for the ambulance, it took a few minutes, and then Alina, and the crew came over and gave me a good shock and got my heart rhythm back. They moved me to the hospital and then airlifted me to Daytona Avenue and took me off the respirator and, yeah, it was quite an experience. And I appreciate the team that really helped out in the quick response. Carl Parker was there to secure the scene, and we have Whitney to help me get the 911 call, which really helped Steve keep the rhythm going. That's, he mentioned that, that's how important that was to have them walk him through it, you know, because they say it's different doing it on a dummy than a real person. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. Thank you.
Do you need to stand up first? So actually, the first award, you know, that I want to present to is Mr. Carl Parker, Officer Carl Parker, or Deputy Carl Parker. You know, again, thank you. Again, it's a whole chain of events, you know, and he played an integral role, you know, in doing this, you know, as well. I also want to present an award to Mrs. Whitney Zwazwa, who I will point out is a paramedic herself and is married to one of our Flagler County Fire Rescue personnel as well. And then, as I mentioned, a collaborative approach. We work very closely with Flagler Beach Fire Department and Palm Coast Fire Departments as well. They respond paramedics on their apparatus, because they can get on scene sometimes a little bit faster than we do and begin to initiate care. So in this situation, I want to present an award to Lieutenant Patrick Giuliano from Palm Coast Fire Department as well. And from his team as well was Jeremy Barton and Osvaldo Seen. I hope I said that right. You know, they weren't able to make it today, but they, again, they play an integral role in this as well. And for our team, I want to present an award to David Dufek. David is also one of our flight paramedics, you know, on Fire Flight. You know, so he plays a pretty integral role in our organization day in and day out. And the last one for this life-saving award is for Mr. Elena Malzahn, who also happens to be one of our rescue supervisors as well. Commissioners, that's all I have for today.
Great, thank you. Well, I hope everybody can come up, we'll take a picture with everybody, but...
How about a round of applause?
Yes, absolutely.
We didn't practice any of that.
Good job. Yeah, good job.
That's one of my favorite parts of the meetings, when you guys come up for these awards. It's great, especially the stories that go back to the academy and the students that have graduated and now an integral part in the structure of the county's fire rescue. So thank you for that. Anybody else want to say anything? Alright, well, thank you again. Give our appreciation to the whole team.
Thank you, and we appreciate your support.
You probably don't want to go too far, Chief. Our first proclamation is Fire Prevention Week, October 6th through 12th, 2024. And reading that one, Commissioner O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a proclamation of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners recognizing October 6th through the 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week in Flagler County. Whereas Flagler County is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our county, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires caused 3,790 civilian deaths in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States respond to approximately 360,000 home fires, and whereas data continues to show that the majority of fire deaths in the United States occur in homes with no smoke alarms or no working smoke alarms, and whereas the presence of working smoke alarms in homes reduces the risk of dying in a home fire by 54%, and more than 38% of home fire deaths result from fires in which no smoke detector was present. Whereas smoke alarms should meet the needs of all family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities, and whereas homeowners should test smoke alarms at least once per month by pushing the test button, and whereas homeowners should replace smoke alarms when they are 10 years old or don't respond when tested, and whereas residents are responsive to public education measures and are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You, effectively serves to remind Flagler County residents it is important to install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each separate sleeping area, and on each level of the home. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners that they hereby proclaim the week of October 6th through the 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week in Flagler County, and remind everyone of the theme, Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You, for Fire Prevention Week 2024, and urge all citizens to support the many public safety activities and efforts of fire and emergency services. Adopted this 7th day of October 2024, attested by Tom Bexley, clerk of the Circuit Court, and signed by our Chair, Mr. Andy Dance.
Well, good morning again, Chairman and members of the commission. You know, obviously, prevention is the key word. You know, it is easier, cheaper, and more effective to prevent fires than it is to respond to them. You know, obviously, we have to have a fire department because there are times when things are not prevented, and so that's why we're there. But our number one non-firefighting suppression job in the fire service is to prevent fires, and every firefighter is responsible for preventing fires. The smoke alarms that are in homes today are a major part, you know, of preventing those fires. And when a fire occurs, getting people notified early and out of the home and activated early. So we are an absolute believer, you know, in smoke alarms. We strongly encourage people to, you know, to have them in the home, you know, one inside each bedroom, outside of each bedroom, in the hallway, and on each floor, you know, of the homes. And I know from time to time, they can go off when somebody burns dinner, and that's okay, you know, but we would rather have them there, and again, and not need them, than need them and not have them, you know, there. You know, so we strongly encourage people to put them into the homes. The good news about smoke detectors anymore is that you don't have to change the batteries once a year anymore, because the newer smoke detectors are coming with 10-year batteries, you know, but they do have to continually be tested, just to make sure that they continue to work. And we continue to encourage people that if you have any questions about your smoke alarms, you know, don't hesitate to call us. We will more than happy to come out, take a look at them, help you navigate if you need to make some changes and things like that. So, you know, the reality is that the deaths that occur from fires, you know, continues to be a number that, you know, concerns us, but we're going to continue to drive the message about prevention, and especially during Prevention Week. In this world where we are inundated, the people are inundated with so much information, it's easy to lose sight, you know, of the message. You know, so Fire Prevention Week is about that, and we definitely appreciate the proclamation from the commission, just continuing to drive that message home, that prevention is important. So, so thank you for your support again.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. We've got your proclamation. Can I get a motion and second for approval?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve October 6th through 12th as Fire Prevention Week.
Second.
Alright, a motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner O'Brien. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Did you want to get a picture with the proclamation? And I'll say one more thing, is we've got the storm coming with potential flooding. Fire prevention, I think we should remind everybody with their lithium batteries to make sure they are out of the water and keep them dry, because we've seen those start fires after the flooding.
Yes, sir, and that's not just in the electric cars, that's in the scooters and everything else as well, so use a lot of caution.
Yep. Alright, thank you. Come on up.
Where else do they have lithium batteries?
Phones.
Phones.
Yeah, almost everything.
Get some more people over here. There we go.
All this one's right in front of me. Thank you, everybody.
Alright, good fires.
Thank you, sir. Yep. That's right. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Those folks and all of our other first responders will be busy in the upcoming weeks, so keep them in your thoughts and prayers, too. They're going to be working long and hard hours. Alright, second proclamation, National 4-H Week. This is October 7th through 12th, and requested by Laura Valencia, Flagler County Extension Director. I'm going to go ahead and read this one, if the 4-H folks can come on up. "The proclamation of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners recognizing the week of October 7th through 12th, 2024, as National 4-H Week. Whereas 4-H is America's largest youth development organization, having supported almost 6 million youth across the country thus far, and whereas 4-H has helped more than 230,000 youth in Florida to become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders, and whereas during the 2023-24 4-H year, the program impacted over 300 youth in Flagler County with the help of more than 40 volunteers throughout 4-H clubs. Whereas 4-H is delivered by Cooperative Extension, a community of more than 100 public universities across the nation that provides experiences where young people learn by doing hands-on projects in areas including health, science, agriculture, and citizenship. And whereas National 4-H Week showcases the incredible experiences that 4-H offers young people and highlights the remarkable 4-H youth in Flagler County who work each day to make a positive impact on those around them. And whereas 4-H's network of 600,000 volunteers and 3,500 professionals provide caring and supportive mentoring to all 4-Hers, helping them to grow into true leaders, entrepreneurs, and visionaries. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners that they hereby proclaim the week of October 7th through 12th, 2024, as National 4-H Week in Flagler County, and encourage all of our citizens to recognize 4-H for the significant impact it has made and continues to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead for a lifetime. Adopted this 7th day, October 2024, attested by Tom Bexley and signed by me." And if I could have a motion and a second for approval?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve October 7th through 12th as National 4-H Week.
Second.
Alright, motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner O'Brien. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, congratulations on your proclamation.
Thank you.
And how are you today?
Very good. I want to say thank you for the support throughout the years to the Flagler County 4-H program. We currently have 300 youth that participate in our program and about 31 active volunteers. We recently hired a 4-H agent, and we are so excited, she's part of the community, so we're looking forward to grow our program, doing programming at the schools. So, thank you also to our volunteers for all the hours that they commit to our youth. Their time is very busy for them, and they take out of their normal day of work to come and help our youth in Flagler County. So, thank you so much.
Sir, just state your name for the record, so the clerk...
My name is Laura Valencia, and I'm the County Extension Director.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And...
I am Carolyn Kovach. I am the Florida Sea Grant Extension Agent, but I partner with 4-H doing marine science summer camps.
Great, thank you for being here. Alright, well, come on up for a picture, and thanks again. Glad to be able to recognize 4-H. They do a lot of work with our community youth, so thank you very much. The next proclamation is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It's October 2024. This is directed by Candy Wilkie, Family Life Center Services Coordinator, and Commissioner Hanson, you have this one?
I do.
Alright, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. "A proclamation of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners recognizing the month of October 2024 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas home should be a place of warmth, unconditional love, tranquility, and security. And for most of us, home and family can indeed be counted among our greatest blessings. Tragically, for many Americans, their home is tarnished by violence and fear. And whereas family violence is a crime that transcends race, religion, ethnicity, economic stature, and one of its greatest tragedies being its effect on our children. And whereas an estimated 4.8 million cases of domestic violence occur each year, tragically killing an average of three women every day nationally. And whereas the Family Life Center, the only certified domestic violence emergency shelter and rape crisis center in Flagler County, provided over 6,998 hours of services to victims in the past year. And whereas each October, the formal recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month allows the community to acknowledge and show their support for the victims of this horrific crime. And whereas Family Life Center, the Flagler County Advocates Alliance, and the Flagler County Domestic Violence Task Force membership are committed to confront this crisis and are working together to increase public understanding of this problem and mobilize community efforts to end domestic violence in Flagler County. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners that they hereby declare the month of October 2024 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Flagler County, and urge all citizens of Flagler County to become a part of the community response to end domestic violence and to send the message that this crime will not be tolerated in our community. As we spread awareness of domestic violence in our community during the month of October, we recognize that it takes an entire community to stand together and make a difference. Together, we can break the cycle and impact the lives of future generations. Adopted this 7th day of October 2024, attested by Tom Bexley, clerk of the Circuit Court and Comptroller, and signed by the Flagler County Board of Commissioners Chairman, Andy Dance."
Welcome. Good to see everybody in purple today. Who's coming up? Candy?
It says, please state your name for the record. Y'all know me. I'm Candace Wilkie, I'm the Domestic Violence Services Coordinator with the Family Life Center. Thank you so much for your ongoing support. Andy, you are at just about every event that we hold, so thank you for that. Leanne, sorry we're missing her this morning, but she is on our board, and we thank you for sharing her with us on a voluntary basis. Just so you know, in the state of Florida, in 2023, there were 80,493 crisis hotlines for the year and 613,583 nights of sheltered victims throughout the state. for the year and 613,583 nights of sheltered victims throughout the state of Florida. Domestic violence doesn't stop with hurricanes, with COVID or anything. So, um, as we know, it transcends through all economic and racial, all of the populations. And domestic, October is an opportunity to raise awareness. So there's a few things that we have going on throughout the month of October in addition to the proclamations is we are asking the community to help us light Flagler County in purple by changing the bulbs on your porches to purple or getting spotlights that are purple. We do have flyers on the back table with the information, you know, about what we have going on this month. We have some pins for you all. I'm going to ask Michelle to give those to you. We don't do this work alone. Family Life Center is the certified domestic violence emergency shelter in Flagler County, but we aren't alone in this work. The victim advocates from the Sheriff's Office, Flagler Beach Police Department, all of the members of Flagler County Sheriff's Office and the police departments, Benel, Flagler Beach, it takes all of us, in addition to, you know, I know Flagler cares us here in the community, their huge help and support to our agency. So it's not just us out there providing support to survivors. It takes everyone in our community to provide those services and support, and we just thank you for this opportunity. Did you want to speak?
Good morning.
Good morning.
David Williams with the Flagler County Sheriff's Office. I just wanted to say that as law enforcement, we respond as first responders, we respond to many calls for domestic violence. But unfortunately, we are a commanding presence, the uniform, the whole thing, and a lot of times, we can't get a thorough investigation completed because victims are reluctant to really come forward to us with all of the information that's necessary. But our victim advocates are awesome. And they're the soft face of the Sheriff's Office. They're able to connect with these victims on a level that the uniform just simply can't and get information that is vital to convictions for suspects, assistance needed for these victims, and other services. So obviously, I want to say a great thank you to them for the services they provided and for the collaboration between the agencies because they all cover each other, we have each other's backs. So we always have coverage throughout the county 24/7. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Anybody else? Wanted to come say anything? All right, well, thank you. Thank you for the Family Life Center. Thank you to the victim advocates. Appreciate all that you do on a yearly basis, every day, so thank you. Anybody else? All right, well, come on up for a picture.
Get your proclamation.
Thank you for all you do.
Thanks for all you do.
I know your face is kind of soft.
He's got three weeks. Your mind.
Thank you again for being here. It's an honor to be able to have you here and present that proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion by Commissioner Hanson, second by Commissioner O'Brien. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next proclamation is Red Ribbon Week. This is for October 23rd through 31st of 2024, requested by Savannah Prince, Flagler Cares Prevention Coordinator. Good morning. And now we go to red.
It's Red Ribbon Week.
And welcome again, good morning. Go ahead. Oh, who's got the, oh, Ms. Commissioner Hanson again. Sorry, thank you.
Proclamation of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners recognizing October 23th through 31st, 2024, as Red Ribbon Week. Whereas alcohol and drug misuse has reached epidemic levels across our nation, imposing, posing a significant threat to the health and safety of our communities. And whereas it is vital that unified and visible prevention and education efforts be undertaken by all community members to reduce the demand for drugs. And whereas the National Family Partnership is sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, which provides an opportunity for citizens to showcase their dedication to living drug-free lifestyles. Whereas Flagler Cares, along with businesses, government entities, parents, law enforcement, medical professionals, religious institutions, schools, senior citizen service organizations, and youth, are all encouraged to demonstrate their commitment to promoting healthy, drug-free living by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign. Whereas Flagler County is committed to allocating resources and support to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners that they hereby declare October 23th through 31st, 2024, as Red Ribbon Week in Flagler County, and urge all citizens to actively participate in drug prevention and education activities, making a visible stand for a healthier, drug-free community with the dedicated support of Flagler Cares. Adopted this 7th day of October, 2024, attested to by Tom Bexley, Clerk of the Circuit Court, and signed by Flagler County Board of Commissioners Chairman, Andy Dance. And Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve, uh, excuse me, October 23th through 20, through 31st as Red Ribbon Week in Flagler County.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, second by Commissioner O'Brien. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, congratulations, welcome.
Hi, I'm Kristy Amberkamp. I'm the Prevention Director with Flagler Cares, and thank you so much for allowing us to elevate this conversation. Red Ribbon Week is really about connecting with our youth and bringing forward the conversation around substance use prevention. As Chief Tucker said, prevention is important and for us, it's powerful. So just being open to those conversations and parents and caregivers of our young people have conversations around substance use, and Red Ribbon Week is the perfect time to do so. Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Anybody else? No? All right. Well, thank you again for being here. Come on up to accept the proclamation and we'll get a quick picture.
Good morning.
Take care.
Thank you so much.
All right, and our final proclamation today is for SCORE's 60th Anniversary, which is October 4th, 2024. This is requested by Tony Flores, the SCORE Chapter 87 Certified Mentor and Diversity and Inclusion Champion, and that is being read by Commissioner O'Brien.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a proclamation of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners recognizing October 4th, 2024, as the 60th Anniversary of SCORE in Flagler County. Whereas SCORE, a nationwide nonprofit network of volunteer mentors that provide support to prospective and existing business owners, is celebrating its 60th, excuse me, 60th Anniversary. And whereas since 1964, SCORE has helped more than 17 million entrepreneurs, and whereas SCORE volunteers generously, sorry about that, contribute their time and expertise to mentor entrepreneurs, helping to drive the growth of the small business community and bring the American dream to fruition. And whereas the Flagler County SCORE Chapter 87 has been instrumental in small business development, offering critical support and mentorship at no charge to the citizens of this community. And whereas SCORE is fulfilling its mission, is to grow successful small businesses across America, one business at a time. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners that they hereby recognize the 60th Anniversary of SCORE in Flagler County, adopted this 7th day of October, 2024, attested to by Tom Bexley, Clerk of the Circuit Court, and signed by our Chair, Mr. Andy Dance.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us. We're doing a little PR for our organization, and what a timely place and, and time to do it is after 60 years. I'm David Ferguson. Some of you know who I am. I know most of you guys. I'm here with Tony Flores and Philip Bailey. The three of us represent nearly 30 years of volunteering pro bono for business development in the county, including Volusia County. We're among 25 active volunteers that are serving the SCORE organization. I just wanted to read what SCORE put out for PR, and we'll take an extra minute if, if we can spare it today. There are 17 million entrepreneurs achieving their dreams with help from SCORE. We're part of over 300 chapters. We're Chapter 87, which includes Flagler County and Volusia County. And, and SCORE is proud to celebrate 60 years helping America's small business launch, grow, and thrive. Since 1964, more than 17 million entrepreneurs have received support from SCORE, a resource partner of the Small Business Administration. SCORE has a nationwide network of more than 10,000 volunteers serving all 50 U.S. states and territories, guiding entrepreneurs in their path to success. The world has changed significantly in the past 60 years, and so has SCORE. We used to be called the Retired Service, what were we, Service Corps of Retired Executives, gray-haired guys like myself. But we've, we've grown to include a number of younger people, females, minorities, as well as other volunteers, to represent the kind of clients that we serve, which are largely a number of younger people. So we're proud of that, and we're proud of the, the way we've adapted to technology by doing remote mentoring, using Zoom and other techniques, and other, providing other services, including online learning modules, workshops, remote mentoring, and specialized programs. During COVID, we struck a chord with keeping the organization active and productive and to deliver lots of mentoring sessions and not missing a single day of service. I just want to mention to bring this home for the people who don't know SCORE too much. We work with the county, with the economic development person, Dolores Key. We work with the city and municipalities, with Craig McKinney in Palm Coast, the Chamber of Commerce, the Small Business Development Center, and we play a role in trying to foster economic development. That's the reason we've gotten involved in, in this, to give back. We're all successfully navigated through the business world and have been through some of the problems and pitfalls of, of starting a business and, and growing a business. So I want to thank Tony personally, who went through the hard work of getting you guys to recognize us here. In the past, we used to be more active when the economic development subchapter was active here, and through Tom Hellman and his efforts, Roger Levertin and so forth. So we're just proud to be part of SCORE, and we're happy that you've chosen to recognize our organization. So thank you again.
Absolutely. Tony, you want to say anything?
Good morning, this is Tony Flores.
Good morning.
It's a pleasure to be among the distinguished Commissioners in Flagler County that was founded in 1915. And since this is Hispanic Heritage Month, I want to say that the first Congressperson was a Latino, Joseph Hernandez. And this SCORE chapter also adopted St. John's because they don't have a chapter. And one of the things that I've been doing over the last six years is that we help establish the Junior Chamber of Commerce in our high schools here. And we have to be proud of that because Flagler County is the only county in all of Florida that has Junior Chamber of Commerce in both high schools. And now we're pushing for scholarships for trade schools because a lot of these young kids, they want to start their own businesses. They necessarily don't want to go to college. So there's a lot of opportunities. So I thank you for giving us this time and proclamation, and let's move on and make the beautiful things happen here in Flagler County, okay? Especially the city of Benel that's, needs a lot of help and has a lot of industrial opportunities.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tony. All right, Mr. Daley, welcome.
Yeah, I'm the Treasurer, I'm Phil Bailey. I just want to thank you all for your past financial support of SCORE. We really appreciate your donations to our chapter, and we still continue supporting Flagler County as best as we can. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks for being here.
Did we motion that one?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve October 4th, the SCORE's 60th Anniversary.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Hanson, second by Commissioner O'Brien. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations, your proclamation's approved. We appreciate you being here and thank you for all the work that you do to help our economic development front and, and our entrepreneurs succeed. So come on up for a picture. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. David, thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Good to see you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we've got two presentations today, the first of which is Flagler County Extension Services. So Laura Valencia will come back down again. I saw the PowerPoint flash earlier, so. Good morning.
Good morning. Again, Laura Valencia. So again, I'm the County Extension Director for Extension Services. For more than 100 years, 4-H has inspired families, shaped careers, and impacted communities. Like I'm, like we mentioned earlier today, from October 7th through the 12th, we will celebrate the impact of 4-H during National 4-H Week across the nation, but also locally. The team of this year is beyond ready. Today, we will provide an overview of the Flagler County 4-H Program. Next slide. Remember when you were a kid navigating life's challenges? The worlds have changed and it's moving very fast. It feels like now it's even harder and moving even faster than when we were kids. I'm not going to say my age, though. And yet, for over 120 years, 4-H has been here. Just like generations before, they are preparing today's youth to be beyond ready. Ready to serve, ready to build, ready to conquer, and ready to succeed. Through dynamic, through dynamic programs that are proven to work and build skills like leadership, problem-solving, team-building, and confidence, 4-H is preparing the next generation to be beyond ready, workforce-ready. The University of Florida Institute of Food and Agricultural Sciences, better known as UFIFAS or E-FAS, they change our name all the time, is a federal, state, and county partnership dedicated to education, research, and extension. The 4-H Youth Development Program is delivered by the Cooperative Extension. A community of more than 100 public universities across the nation and U.S. territories and internationally that provide experiences where young people learn by doing. The 4-H pledge is a commitment made by 4-H member, and it states, "I pledge my head to clear thinking, my heart to greater loyalty, my hands to larger service, my health to better living, for my club, my community, my country, and my world." living for my club, my community, my country, and my world." What that means? The pledge emphasizes personal growth, community service, and global responsibility. So what does 4H do? In 4H program, kids and teens ages 5 through 18 complete hands-on projects in areas like health, science, and civic engagement in a positive environment where they receive guidance from our adult volunteers and are encouraged to take a proactive leadership role. Our mission as adults is to help youth acquire the knowledge, develop the life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of societies. 4H emphasizes the importance of involving youth in the learning process. In 4H, we believe in the power of young people. We see that every child has valuable strengths and real influence to improve the world around us. For more than 100 years, like I mentioned before, 4H has welcomed young people of all belief and backgrounds, giving kids a voice to express who they are and how they make their life and communities better. So what is happening in Flagler 4H? Our Flagler 4H Youth Development Program is focused in three priority areas. As I mentioned before, civic engagement, healthy living, and science. We accomplish this through a variety of subject matter materials as a vehicle for engaging youth in an area of interest and curiosity. The 4H experience provides a safe environment where they feel protected to fail, in which youth are given the opportunity to experience a sense of belonging, independence, mastery, and generosity. Our Flagler County 4H youth are learning communication and leadership skills, social relationship and building skills, decision-making, organizing and goal-setting, self-confidence, employability skills, self-responsibility, and character. How they do this? Through our projects. It's true that you know a whole lot about agriculture, but there's so much more to 4H. We have arts, music, archery, civic engagement through civil discourse, healthy living, soccer, and nutrition. So what is next for 4H? Next year, at our fair, we're going to be providing a program called Barnyard Challenge. It's a program where all youth, all ability programming. Barnyard Challenge is a program for youth with developmental and intellectual disabilities to learn about animals. It provides mentorship with hands-on training so you can learn how to handle, care for, and show an animal with the help of a peer mentor. So to end this presentation, I would like to finish with a quote from Temple Grayden. There needs to be a lot more emphasis of what a child can do instead of what he cannot do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great presentation, and again, for UFIFAS, for all the outreach that they do here in Flagler County, very important to us. So thank you for leading that. Did you want one more picture for this? Are you good with?
We're good.
You're good? Okay. Just want to make sure. But thank you again. And our last presentation today is on our Flagler County Transportation Department. We have Mike Dixon, our General Services Director. Mike's probably out busy getting ready.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Trevor Martin, Flagler County General Services.
Good morning.
With me today is Mrs. Pia Thomas, the Transportation Manager, and Mr. Rich Briggs, the Transportation Driver. We wanted to come before you this morning just to share a little bit of the excellence provided by Flagler County Public Transportation, specifically that of Mr. Rich Briggs. Recently, he was selected among the hundreds of paratransit drivers throughout the state of Florida by the Commission for the Transportation Disadvantaged as Driver of the Year. His achievement was such that, in fact, a local news organization reached out to Mr. Briggs to interview him and to ride along with him for the day. So we wanted to share that video with you this morning.
Getting to doctor's appointments and running air ends can be a challenge if you don't drive, but in Flagler County, there is a service that's stepping in to help those who might not be able to get around on their own. It's part of the paratransit bus system. Spectrum News 13's Masia Leva rode alongside one of the drivers working to help seniors and those with disabilities get door-to-door on demand. For Richard Briggs, each day behind the wheel is a little different.
We start very early in the morning, actually in the dark, picking up dialysis patients going to their treatments.
Engine's on, and Briggs is off to pick up his first customer of the day on Flagler County's paratransit bus system. After spending his career as a cross-country motor coach driver and even driving for the Special Olympics, Briggs came out of retirement to get behind the wheel once again when he moved to Flagler County. The paratransit bus system offers a demand-response share-right, door-to-door service that focuses on the elderly as well as people with disabilities.
This pickup is going to be out into the Mondex area, so we're going out to the countryside.
The service provides transportation to doctor's office, banks, stores, gyms, or any other errands residents who might not have any other option need to make. The buses are equipped to welcome residents with wheelchairs and walkers, but it brings warmth and compassion what makes the ride better.
Sometimes people get on with serious illnesses, and they might need a little pick-me-up. They might need someone to just tell them it's going to be okay.
He won the 2023 Driver of the Year Award. Briggs has worked for Flagler County going on seven years and has transported more than 31,000 passengers, driving more than 281,000 miles without a complaint or accident. He builds relationships with the people who ride the bus, who are mostly repeat customers.
You can help it. You can help us to create a relationship because you got to know what their ways, their problems.
As he pulls up to his first stop, Briggs sees a familiar face, Flagler County resident Joshua Cummins. He has been riding with Flagler County Transport for about five years. As he hops on, Briggs strikes up conversation right away.
Josh, how's your grandmother?
Josh says all the drivers have made his journey through dialysis appointments more manageable.
I feel safe with all the drivers.
He says he would like to see more people apply to become drivers so that the county can continue to meet the demand and keep providing this service.
The more drivers they have, the more efficient the system will be.
As for Briggs, he hopes this is only the beginning of many more years to come serving his community.
I think I could put a few more years in. I'm, like I said, I failed at retirement, so I'm still here, and a lot of the drivers that I work with are older, and they lead the way of, you know, keeping on.
To keep helping people who need to get places. In Flagler County, Masia Leva, Spectrum News.
Trips within Flagler County are $2 per ride. Medical trips to Volusia, St. John's County, Jacksonville, and Gainesville are also available on select days at set round-trip rates. We'll have more details, including the phone number to call for paratransit service, all of that on our website. Just go to mynews13.com.
So obviously, we're very proud of Mr. Briggs, and I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate him and thank him for his outstanding service and continued dedication to the community. Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. I did have the opportunity for a little trip with Mr. Briggs that one day he received his award. So an outstanding driver and a great, great with the people, and appreciate your service. So thank you. And I did put a good word in. At a recent meeting, I was chatting with a Nassau County Commissioner who's taking their service in-house. So Commissioner Martin, maybe we'll get together and I'll give you his information. He's looking for some guidance on how they can do it.
Whatever we can do to help. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Congratulations.
Oh, let's get a picture. Come on back up. Don't go too far. We did that. That's the same award, right? We did out at the... We gave that to him out in the parking lot at the...
Congratulations.
He brought it today for show and tell. Thank you all for, that's a great service. I know Commissioner Sullivan would love to be here. He thinks highly of you all as well, and unfortunately couldn't be here today, but thank you. Appreciate it. All right, that puts us through our recognitions and proclamations. We'll move on to, let's see, community outreach. So this is a 30-minute time period allocated for public comment on any consent agenda item or topic that is not on the agenda. Each speaker's allowed up to three minutes to address the commission. Speakers should approach the podium, identify themselves, and direct comments to the chair. So open up for community outreach if there's anybody here for public comment. All right, seeing nobody approach, we'll move on to our consent. Does anybody have any comments or questions on consent items?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay. I was hoping Ms. Shank was still here. I was going to recognize her, but she left. And Mr. Bogus, is Mr. Bogus here? He's also one of the... I don't see him either. Okay. I don't have any comments, so we'll move on to consent approval.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we...
Or pull. Did anybody have anything to pull?
Oh, nothing to pull for me.
Anything to pull?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner O'Brien, seconded by Commissioner Hanson. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Not opposed. Motion carries unanimously. We will move on to general business. And that is 8A, which is Approval of a Resolution Pursuant to Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code authorizing the issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds by the Housing Finance Authority of Volusia County in a not-to-exceed amount of $18.5 million for facilities in Flagler County. Mr. Mangle, good morning.
Adam Mangle, Growth Management Director. So this request came through the board back in April. That resolution in April permitted the board, and you've seen these before, to geographic limitations that would have the Housing Finance Authority of Volusia County only remaining within its county boundaries. We approved a resolution back in April that allowed, specific to this project, the geographic boundaries to be extended into Flagler since we don't have a Housing Finance Authority of our own. And then this then is that follow-up resolution that specifically then meets the requirements of the IRS code and allows then the issuance of bonded debt as multifamily housing bonds by the Housing Finance Authority of Volusia County, specific to this Kensington project. Kensington is a senior housing project in the city limits of the city of Palm Coast, running through the Live Local Act process. And so all that land use aspect of it is all running through the city. Your role here with this resolution is then, through this resolution, is meeting the IRS requirements that allow then that bonded debt, should it be available, should it be able to be issued, up to $18.5 million to be issued specific for the Kensington project. There's still a lot of ifs with that. This, as a private activity bond, the amounts are limited on an annual basis. We found that out. We had some discussions with our bond council, and so that it's limited in how the state allocates its funding annually. And so with this, then, it will not be something that will hold our amount until these bonds are paid off. It actually will, at the close of this calendar year, depending on when these bonds are issued, will then have another window, another availability of funds. As private activity bonds, those are available on an annual basis based on how the state makes those monies available to the county. So with that, I'll close. Waiting any questions or comments? Representatives of the developer borrower are present if you have any questions for them. Thank you.
Okay, great. Questions for Mr. Mangle?
Well, this project is presented and approved by the city of Palm Coast.
Ultimately, it will be, yes, sir.
Right. We really don't have a say in it other than approving the right to go forward with this bond.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner O'Brien, anything? I mean, that's kind of the comments I had. Our authority is pretty limited on this. Any questions on the project or the conditions of approval are through the city of Palm Coast?
Through the city, right. Yes, sir.
It is a senior, affordable housing senior project.
It is.
So just like workforce housing, this is also, as I understand, an in-demand area for the city of Palm Coast. All right, I really don't have any other questions either. I mean, we've, I think if we would have had some more serious ones earlier in April when we first did it, right? This is a two-step process, so. If there's a motion, I'll open up for public comment first if you want. Is there anybody here for public comment? I'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution Pursuant to Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code authorizing the issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds by the Housing Finance Authority of Volusia County in a not-to-exceed amount of $18.5 million for facilities in Flagler County.
Second? All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner O'Brien. There's not any other questions or comments. I'll call the question. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. And then we will move to public hearing. This is a quasi-judicial process. Audience issued refrain from clapping, booing, or shouts of approval. We'll give staff a 10-minute presentation, applicant 15-minute presentation, and we will go to public comment. I need to ask if there's any ex parte communications. Commissioner Hanson?
I received an email on this subject, one.
Correct. And Commissioner O'Brien?
Yeah, same thing, one email.
Correct. So, and I did, I also received an email from a resident, just basically questioning the tree ordinance that passed after this was approved. So you may want to comment just on the applicability of that. And so, Mr. Mangle?
So this preliminary plat is the first northernmost of the Eagle Lakes' successor development. If you remember, that this one was the portion to the north. This is known as the Northern Lands parcel. Leave the limitation here was up to 425 lots, and you can see the layout. What I've done is superimposed a preliminary plat key sheet over that northern parcel, the northern lands. And then if you can kind of orient yourself to the north, just off of this, and a little bit further north is our landfill on Old Kings Road, South Old Kings Road. Across on the opposite side of the street is the Old Kings Village Development that's been annexed into the city. Behind that, to the east, is our Polo Club West that remains in unincorporated Flagler County. And then you have the other developments, Eagle Lakes itself, Phase 1, Section 1, is to the southwest side of Old Kings and just off of the aerial you see here. This south portion will be coming potentially, I believe, if everything goes to schedule, next month for you. That's the portion that's known as Crestwind, and that is the age-restricted portion. This one is not age-restricted. So there's that aerial, there's the future land use that we had had that took it to, I believe it was that low-density, single-family category, along with a pullout for some conservation area that corresponded to wetlands that were determined to exist. And then the zoning itself, planned unit development. All of this in Zone X, not part of a special flood hazard area. And you do have a mix of soils that are present here. Some of those depressional soils do correspond to some low areas, do correspond to the wetlands. As you can see those there. And then you see, again, the wetlands, a few sporadic wetlands that are there, for the most part, are being avoided by the actual plating. These are the sheets that compose the plat. I think I may have put them all in here, but this is the cover sheet for the plat along with its dedications, the key sheet, and then each of those that follows. This one is that, effectively, that northeast corner, showing the landscape buffer strip that's there, along with the portion of the right-of-way that's coming to the county. There's a 15-foot strip there that you can see on the immediate right-hand side, referred to as right-of-way buffer. That's additional right-of-way for us for a bike trail, bike path off of the actual pavement area outside the right-of-way of Old Kings. And then adjacent to that's a 25-foot landscape buffer that you see. And so we just go on from there. But of note here, you can see the wetlands. But of note here, you can see the wetlands in the hatching, that area there where it's hatched is the upland buffer adjacent to those identified wetlands. This particular graphic shows something of interest, and this is that you see here with that lighter hatch, kind of in the center and right towards the middle bottom. That's labeled as a future emergency access easement, and that does connect into that future phase to the south, the Crestwind project. And it has a specific track that it will connect into under Crestwind. So what we're seeing here with this is that at present, you'll have to have the waiver for the secondary means of egress, but then once Crestwind develops, you'll have that emergency access connection that'll be present. So approximately 174 acres of development area, development approved through that ordinance 2022-10, which approved the planned unit development. Northern lands, 425 total lots, 40 and 50-foot wide lots. And then Crestwind to the south, southern lands will provide that emergency ingress/egress. And then this came up also. You may remember a discussion last week with the city about the extension, and what they were talking about specifically over the city was extending the water and sewer lines, that both water, sewer, and reuse. We had previously approved several easements, that you'll recall, that were related to this project, related also then to the Old Kings Village project. And so that this is effectively what we refer to as a will-serv letter. I zoomed in here. The date on this is August 13th. This is from FGUA. And so FGUA is our provider in this area. They had come in, if you recall, bought the utility assets that we had, among those the Eagle Lakes utility plant. And the discussion at the city was related to that utility site eventually being transferred from FGUA over to the city of Palm Coast to become, hopefully, its wastewater treatment plant number three. So specifically, there was concern at the city council about the capacity in Plant One. They are taking steps to move some of that capacity to Plant Two. Eventually, this site here, the utility site here, will become, if all things work correctly, Plant Number Three. Statement made by Carl Coat on the record was that the capacity that's presently available from the city is to serve the, I believe we referred to 110 units that are presently permitted by DEP that really are Eagle Lakes Phase One, Section One. You'll see here, you'll note the discussion about the demand of both water and wastewater. Important consideration here, "letter should not be construed as a commitment to serve, but only as a statement of the availability of service, effective for 12 months from the date of issue," realizing that August date was the date of issue. And then the FGUA's commitment, again, is made to serve consistent with the agreement that they have with the city of Palm Coast, and remembering that the utility services were purchased by FGUA from the county with this all in mind. And so you'll notice here, and I'll touch quickly on the trees, that you had mentioned those. So trees are talked about, I believe, in the PUD. I didn't come prepared to talk about what it specifically says, but to the extent that there's mention in the Land Development Code correction, in the development agreement to the trees, that would certainly take precedence over any changes that occur within the Land Development Code. Otherwise, Land Development Code will apply, is the quick answer. So that...can't remember what we exactly said in the PUD at this point, but our conditions, if you approve the preliminary plat, is no construction commenced, prior issuance of county land development permit. And then the key part here on B, no final plat approval to occur until extension of potable water in sanitary sewer is installed and approved by FGUA as utility provider. That's final plat. Temporary waiver, secondary means of emergency access, and any subdivision improvements not completed will be bonded, consistent with the requirements of Land Development Code. That's the option for approval. You could alternatively deny the preliminary plat. We'd want reasons stated on the record for the denial, or continue the preliminary plat to a time and date certain. With that, I'll close, awaiting questions or comments. Corey with Kimley Horn, the engineer of record, is present for any questions you have regarding any specific design considerations.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Corey, did you want to come up and say anything?
Hi, good morning. Corey Sittler, Kimley Horn Associates, as Adam mentioned, engineer of record for the project on behalf of the development team. I won't add too much. Adam had a great recap of the project. The only thing I will mention, just in terms of the latest updates for the off-site utility improvements and the permit approvals and everything, it was approved, the construction plans were approved at the city of Palm Coast City Council last week, so those construction plans have been approved. And then the utility agreement between Palm Coast and FGUA, I believe that's going to the board, the FGUA board, next week to be approved. So really, we're anticipating being able to start construction on the off-site utility component within the next month. So that's been progressing pretty smoothly. And I know the FGUA, between FGUA, city of Palm Coast, FDEP, and the developer have all been working pretty consistently to discuss any utility capacity for the project. So we've been all partnering together on the project there, so happy to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions?
A simple one. In the technical review, in a couple places there, they keep referring, is it Radiance or is it Crestwind? And they wanted it changed in some of your documents. Is it Radiance is just the northern section and then-
That's correct.
Southern section will remain Crestwind?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. The other thing it said in accord with the...if I could paraphrase the Technical Review Committee, who said that they were generally pleased with the tree handling of the trees. I think it's a way, I'm paraphrasing, but they were generally pleased with that. So I don't know what that means, but...so what do you think about the ability to...did you retain enough trees in this area?
So I will say, the existing land out there is a lot of open pasture land.
Right, right.
And a lot of the wetland areas, we are staying consistent with the site plan that was shown in the PUD. So a lot of the tree coverage was in those wetland areas that are being preserved.
Commissioner O'Brien, anything? Yeah, I will say, the funny story is Radiance was the precursor to us changing the Land Development Code for additional tree protections, and not from the wetlands. Obviously, there's, like you said, it's all pasture land except for the larger oak trees that have grown over the past 50 years in those pasture lands. The...so a comment from somebody who sent us the email was, you know, asking us to deny it because there wasn't a tree survey identifying it, but at the point in time, you are going under the existing rules, but we've changed them since then. But yeah, like 95% or more of the wetlands are being retained, which is, will be the areas of tree canopy, mature tree canopy that'll remain. Regarding utilities, so I watched the city council meeting approving the extension and service. The interesting part is they don't anticipate that being completed until '27, is what I took from their presentation. So that means final plat won't be, you won't be getting any final plat approvals until roughly '27 or something.
So I think the condition, I guess I'll first say that there's, they have, I believe, that specific portion of the project is when they're going to be completing the construction of an additional, an expansion of wastewater treatment plant two, I believe it was. And that's whenever they'll have capacity for the entire project. We have been working with them on a phasing plan for both of these to make sure that we have...obviously, we're not going to construct 425 units all at the same time. It's going to be phased in small chunks. So we've been working with the city and DEP closely to make sure that at each increment, when we expect that these phases of construction to be complete, they'll have sufficient capacity in their plans.
Yeah, I think that's like five phases?
Radiance has five phases, yes, sir.
So you'll come back with a Phase One final plat?
That's correct.
To improve that the city has utilities to cover, the city and FGUA?
Well, part of the approval for the utility extension is that they have to sign the FDEP application certifying that they have the available capacity to serve the project. So that inherently goes with the FDEP clearance whenever we finish the construction of the utilities. So that is, in essence, a way to certify utility capacity for the project.
I think, go ahead.
I was going to say, that goes along with the FGUA comment that it was, services were generally available. You know, I hate that, I hate that word, generally available.
Well, that's one of the things I think that's enlightened me through the process.
But yeah, it's a process. They don't all appear this first day.
Right. When we see this at PUD level, we get a generally available letter, which doesn't do anything to allay the concerns from the public that infrastructure is in place.
Right.
So, you know, as we move through our comp plan and land development codes, I think there might be availability to be more specific in those requests that come before us, whether, you know, we get a letter that states what the existing percentage of capacity is, and if it's not within the desired guidelines, that there's something in their CIP, be it the city or FGUA, that indicates that they have a plan for completing that in time. That's kind of the, one of the things that I've seen, was kind of missing in our review of making sure capacity, infrastructure is there. The connectivity is a, well, between the two projects, Crestwind and Radiance, is a paved, is it a paved connection that's going to be for emergency purposes only?
I believe it's a stabilized grass roadway, so it'll be able to support emergency vehicles, but it'll be a stabilized, stabilized grass.
Is there any room in there for, say, in the future, that for flow between the, on the individual projects? Is there room for that to be a more dedicated, or do you see that potentially to one day be a dedicated connection between them that's open and not restricted?
Yeah, that's correct. So Adam was mentioning that, so Crestwind is, since it is an age-restricted community, it's going to be gated, so the intent was to make this specific for emergency vehicles only.
Okay.
So I guess that will speak to your question.
And the stormwater is connected to the, as I see it anyway, the basin's connected to the headwaters of Bulow Creek, which is an outstanding Florida water. So that's been incorporated, the additional protections of tying into outstanding Florida water have been integrated in the stormwater?
That's correct, and that's all being permitted. We should have permit approvals very soon with the Water Management District, but that's one of the requirements, yes.
All right, great. I don't have any other questions, thank you. Gentlemen?
I'm good.
Okay. I'll open it for public comment. If anybody from the public wishes to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the project 2023040034. Approval of a preliminary plat for Radiance, parcel number, along number, presented by Venture Eight LLC applicant.
Second? All right, I have a motion for item 9A. A motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner O'Brien. If there's no further questions, I'll call a question. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We'll remind everybody, but, right, early on, I think one of the comments that we got from email is that at preliminary plat, most of the hard work's been done. So in the land, the comp plan change and in the PUD language, that's where all the work gets done on the development side. And staff is making sure that the preliminary plat meets all the conditions that are established within the PUD when they bring it to us. So the due diligence is much earlier in this process than at the preliminary plat. So thank you again, thanks for being here, appreciate it. All right, we have gone through the agenda on our at-the-back-end-for-county-administrator report. Welcome.
Good morning, thank you. Just a couple of items. Over the past month, you know that we've conducted a series of community outreach events regarding the beach management plan and funding. Last week, we concluded three forums that were held at the Hammock Community Center. We have another one tentatively scheduled for tomorrow at 1:00 PM with the Hammock Dunes HOA. So far, we've experienced a great turnout, received some great input from the community. Staff anticipates bringing this item back to the board for a workshop discussion on October 21st. We have a survey out there right now with the public. That survey closes October 13th, so we think that 21st is a good opportunity to discuss this at that workshop. And as you know, staff's been gearing up in preparation of Hurricane Milton. EOC activated yesterday afternoon at a Level Two. Today, we'll be adding some additional staff, and we'll continue with our planning and monitoring. Flagler County has opened up two self-serve sandbag locations, one at Hidden Trails Park, as well as Bay Drive Park. The cities have additional locations available. There's more information with that with Flagler's emergency management team. FPL is presently beginning to stage at the Flagler Executive Airport ahead of the storm's arrival and impacts. And then we'll have more updates will be provided by emergency management over the coming hours and days. So just wanted to make sure the public was aware of that. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Yes, sir.
You know, Heidi, would you talk to, because it's an interest out in my district, if you would talk to debris pickup and drainage in Marineland Acres?
We actually have crews going out there now. There had been calls that came in across the county in the unincorporated area. Out on Water Oak, FPL had a contractor out there. They did leave debris behind. They are picking that up today. We are taking a look at John Anderson and areas within the Hammock. So we have our trash truck going out there ahead of the storm, picking up any loose debris that's been sitting that the waste hauler has not picked up. And then we're also looking at some drainage, stormwater issues where we have some clogged culvert openings, whether it's with debris or sand. So just going out ahead of the storm and just doing some of that prep work today.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if you've had any luck. I know the last, at the last one at the Hammock, somebody from Sea Colony had asked if we were able to do one for Sea Colony specifically, so I don't know if you made any progress reaching out to them.
I had reached out to May Management, that's the management company. They had wanted to do a meeting like mid-November, which may be a little late considering the timing of the survey is October 13th. So she was going to get back to me with a date if we could get it done before October 13th so that we could include their input in the survey. I have not received an email yet this morning, though.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to the county attorney report.
I have no report this morning, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, sir. At this time, I'll open up for community outreach, and again, another 30-minute time period allocated for public comment. This time, I'll open it up for public comment. All right, seeing nobody approach, we'll close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the board for board member comments. Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah, I can't stress enough to get, for people to get ready. This might be nothing, but I think we're going to get wind and rain, and it's liable to be, liable to be some dangerous weather conditions out there. So I encourage people to, today's the day to get ready, not tomorrow. Today's the day. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Brien? Okay. Under my comments, I wanted to bring up Commissioner Pennington's letter that she emailed us. Since she was not here, she wanted that read. Did you bring that copy of the letter so that we could at least discuss it and see if there was any consensus on that letter?
Mr. Chairman, I have it in my emails. I did not print it.
Okay.
Let's see if I have it, Mr. Chairman.
And then while we're waiting on that, I just wanted to remind everybody in my, if they weren't aware, the state approved new stormwater rules over the summer. It was the culmination of a period of two or three years of negotiations with engineers and all the other entities. So it kind of flew through without much fanfare over the summer, but worked, Hamed did some extra research and kind of summarized it. So if anybody's interested in the summary of how the new stormwater rules will apply as we get applicants that come in, there's a grandfathering clause for 18 months that's built into it, unfortunately. But that doesn't preclude us from talking with applicants that come in for PUDs to see if we can't work those new rules into the- come in for PUDs to see if we can't work those new rules into the into the design of PUDs that come through. So just wanted to publicly state that as everybody's aware, that I think, you know, it's been a long time coming that we get extra protections, and and just wanted to put that out there.
Yep, I got it.
All right, Commissioner Hanson found the email.
So what what Ms. Pennington was concerned with is the creation of an enclave off of the the John Anderson Development Annexation issue. And as I understand, an enclave is just where what they annex leaves a big spot in the middle or some spot in the middle that's completely surrounded by the annexation, and that 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 enclave is our our responsibility, belongs to the county. And according to the the state rules, that's you can't do that. You're not supposed to do that. So she brings up a good point, and and whether or not we should go to Flagler Beach and say, hey, stop, you can't do that. And what do you think, Sean?
Yes, I'd like to, before I get to that specific point, I'd like to give some context of of what's been happening. The the city has had a planning board meeting and a city commission meeting, followed by a city commission workshop to receive public input, and I did appear at that planning board meeting and city commission meeting to raise concerns of the county, trying to keep the development to looking like it did while it was in the county to the extent possible, realizing it's going to be more urbanized. And so specifically, what I was requesting is that we maintain buffers along Bulow Creek adequate to, well, we hopefully hopefully protect it, but at least to to have it resemble what the development would have looked like in the unincorporated county. And the developer, Mr. Belshi, together with his attorney, did agree to add some language into the putt agreement so that there would be a minimum buffer of 25 feet and an average of 75 feet along that Bulow Creek, that outstanding Florida water body. And in addition, there are two areas in particular, it's a little hard to picture without a visual depiction, but I'll just sort of describe it. There are two particular areas where the creek, the waters of the creek, get very close to the wetland delineation line, and in those particular areas, the developer agreed to maintain a minimum of 75 feet. And so we were we were happy with that as far as buffering goes. Now, we did not, to to the chairman's point, we did not push for any increased requirements for stormwater beyond buffering. We didn't raise that point at all. We can, if that's the direction of this board, and certainly the city can can determine what they want to do with Bulow Creek if they're going to annex that area. Another issue we asked that they keep in place is that individual homeowners not be permitted to sink wells for irrigation on their own lots. The developer agreed to that. That was something that was in the agreement in the county's jurisdiction. The developer also agreed to provide buffering along John Anderson Highway and to construct the connector road, what they call the spine road, which is the main entrance to this development, before commencing construction on the 601st home. So in the county, we had a requirement at, I think it was 453 homes. They will do that now at 600 homes, construct that connector road. This will take pressure off John Anderson Highway. And so we thought, given the increase in density, the dramatic increase in density, that going from 453 to 600 was reasonable accommodation. Lastly, the county has a site, parcel of land on the west side of John Anderson that was provided to the county by Bobby Ginn many years ago for a fire station. That will no longer be needed because the city of Flagler Beach and the city of Palm Coast need to have a discussion to determine how fire services will be provided, which site and which facilities will be used. Those conversations, I'm not sure where they're at, but what I do know is that our fire site is no longer needed. And so the developer has agreed to a a land swap that we think is appropriate, which will allow us to connect the east side of Bulow Creek into the park that is in design. I forget the name of the park, Bulow Creek?
Regional.
Regional Park for Bulow Creek. So we'll have a, hopefully, if permitting works out, we'll have an access for that park both on the west side of the creek off of Old Kings Road and on the east side of the creek off of John Anderson. We felt that those were all positive, positive concessions made made by the developer. Now, getting back to the issue that Ms. Pennington raised, there is an enclave that would be created by this annexation, and the enclave is forbidden by Florida statutes. That said, I would point out that there are many enclaves in Flagler County, and traditionally, they haven't been much of a concern of us. There are many, for example, in the city of Bernal. There is a hodgepodge of enclaves all over the place. The intent of that statute to prohibit enclaves is to make sure that the provision of services are not interrupted or are are as efficient as they can be. And so that's sort of the reasoning behind the statute, and the reason we may want to object. Ms. Pennington is suggesting that if the city of Flagler Beach is balking at taking over John Anderson Highway for this portion of that roadway, that is the first approximately two miles of John Anderson, that we point out, hey, you have a problem here. There's an enclave that you are going to create, and so you should take the roadway. Basically, a sort of a bargaining is what she is asking. I did mention to the city commission this issue of John Anderson Highway, and that we very much believe it ought to be in their jurisdiction because it is a minor collector road. It is not a regional highway. The southern end of John Anderson is constrained and will never be widened. They are proposing enlarging their municipal boundaries by 900 acres. It's appropriate for them to take this roadway. If they want to be a big city, they have to take the responsibilities and not just look to the tax revenue as this benefit, but you also have to provide services and infrastructure. Only city residential driveways and only city roads will be connecting into this portion of John Anderson. It's going to function as a city road. It's not going to function as a county road any longer. So I urged them to take it on, and I said, look, if you're not willing to do that, because the law does not compel you to take the road, at least collect our transportation impact fees and and transmit them to us through an interlocal like we do with other impact fees. In fairness to the city commission, it was the first time they had heard this, and they had they asked for further information. And so I gathered that information, but I have not yet had an opportunity to present it to the city commission because they had a just a workshop for public comment. This Thursday was supposed to be the next meeting where I was going to appear and advocate again that they take the roadway and and point out the costs that would be involved in maintaining it, give them the information that they didn't have. So that's scheduled for this Thursday. I I'm not sure if that's going to be canceled because of the storm. Probably, I would say, it looks like it will be. That's kind of where it stands now. So I made the ask, and they said, well, this is the first time we heard about this taking on the roadway. We would like some more information.
But getting back to the enclave, if they establish this enclave, I know we've had trouble in Bernal providing gas or trash pickup and stuff like that. So is that the same thing we're going to be dealing with, that we're going to have to drive trash, get our trash trucks to go through the city of Flagler Beach to get to our little, however many homes?
Yes, sir. However, that is happening presently. So those those sites that, I think there's about eight parcels and maybe about six of them are developed, they are receiving waste, solid waste service from the county, and they pay that assessment every year on their tax bill. The trucks have to drive past them to get to our residents in the unincorporated area at the southern end of John Anderson. So they'll be passing right by their homes regardless. And so I guess.
So we just not consider ourselves with the state law?
I suppose the question, well, we could always enter an interlocal agreement that spells out how services will be provided to those residents, you know? For example, how about law enforcement? I really don't know how that works. Is it supposed to be the sheriff's deputies, or is it the city police? You know, an interlocal could spell those things out.
Well, fire, fire departments, they have their own fire department there, and then so who's going to answer, who's going to answer a fire call?
Yeah. I suppose the question is, when I when I do appear, whether it's this Thursday or some postponed future date, when I go back to the city commission with the the information they asked for on the cost of maintaining that roadway, should I go ahead and bring up this issue of the enclave and and encourage an interlocal agreement? I mean, one thing we can do, and I I haven't heard this, and I hesitate to say it, but the inter, the statute allows us to force those parcels to annex in with the rest and do away with the enclave. Now, they would, then they'd be subject to the millage of the city and and also whatever regulations and ordinances the city has. The the parcels are are large and kind of rural in character, so I I don't get the feeling they're going to just want to voluntarily pay more taxes.
No.
Until they need service, until they need water and sewer.
One other question. So what 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 agreement has been reached on the intersection of the spine road in John Anderson? What's going to happen there? Because remember, years ago, there was an overpass demanded or written into the rules, and then that went away, so.
That went away, and the proposal as they annex in is, I believe, just a what I would call a typical intersection. It's not going to be an overpass. It's not going to be around about, this is my understanding, that it would be a typical intersection.
They're going to put a stoplight there?
That I don't know.
Any other, do you have any thoughts on that, Commissioner O'Brien?
Um, the, I did call Sean and talked to him about it last Friday, you know, just trying to think through it, and, you know, my my initial thoughts were, I think there's probably hundreds and hundreds of enclaves around the whole state. And so, you know, I was trying to understand, you know, the legal side of it, and and as he explained, you know, really, the the intent is is to make sure that there's proper services, you know, municipal services provided, and in this case, that would happen. So I didn't have as much heartburn over the enclave issue. I don't, I don't have any hard thoughts one way or the other on the roadway. I think it would, you know, if if we could create an interlocal agreement and and the city wants to take over that portion, I I think that's fine. I don't think, I think that probably is good practice to do that, but I I wouldn't use that as a reason to want to object to the to the annexation. I I get heartburn over that side of it from a private property rights standpoint and sovereignty for the issue from the city's standpoint. So that's why I wouldn't want to object, but I do understand some of the thought process, and I think, you know, Commissioner Pennington's email and thought process was was well reasoned out and understood it.
Yeah, I would agree that it'd be nice for the city to take over that roadway, but I don't think that's a gamestopper. But but but, we should get the impact fees, for sure.
Yeah, right. Right. And I, you know, I will follow up, and and what Commissioner O'Brien said was, you know, I went and thanks for explaining the intent, because part of what I'm thinking of is the creation of that enclave really doesn't impact the sites as you would an enclave out that's far away from any service on the west side. That would be part of the intent is that that service or that property is not receiving services, or it would be more difficult to provide those for that that parcel. This one is currently getting those services from the county, and it's part of that loop, John Anderson, Old Kings, 100 loop, that that they'll continue to get them. And I I'm hoping that we can, you know, with the commission, create more of a cooperative relationship than bringing a hammer to the game to force them on that, because we have a lot of future problems and issues to solve with them coming up regarding the beach and other things. So I don't want that to be the lasting impact that we're bringing to the table, and would rather we work through them collaboratively on these issues, make the points, and I've had discussions, you know, that there's the reasons why we are adamant about, because of issues we have with city of Palm Coast and Bernal, of trying to maintain roadways where we've got annexed city property on both sides, yet we're responsible for maintaining those roadways. We don't get the impact fees to be able to do that, to expand capacity, and that we've already had the discussions with Palm Coast at at the earlier joint meeting where we expressed the interest to give them the impact fees for BJ's as, in order to alleviate the the traffic capacity issues on 100, but in like-mindedness, want them to be willing to come back to the table with issues on Colbert Avenue, Roberts Road, other areas where they have a majority of those developments feeding another county road in the city of Palm Coast. So I I understand Commissioner Pennington's letter, and I'm hopeful, right, that we can continue positive collaborative discussions with the city and and show them the importance of, you know, they don't need to come back to us for permits for driveway connections and different things like that, and to be able to maintain the road to their standards. The citizens would expect the municipality to be the one to talk to instead of the county getting in the middle of that. So I guess if there's consensus that we will not make, not bring the enclave to or reject the annexation for to do to the enclave.
Right, I think that's fair.
Okay, I agree with that. And then continue, though, and I would say in regards to everything you said, I appreciate the work you've put into to educating the city commission and the and the landowner, the applicant on on our county issues. And I would say, again, I don't know if there's consensus, but I think they need to do everything possible to protect the Bulow headwaters. We only get one shot at protecting the headwaters, and if it means enacting additional stormwater controls that are now been approved by the state, even though they're not required to, I think that's a good faith effort in doing what they can to protect the headwaters. I mean, they've got other complications. There's there's floodplain issues with any of the development close to the Bulow that that also complicates things. But so if, you know, if there's consensus, I would say to also give you that authority to make sure that you you, in addition to the buffering that you've pushed, is is stormwater is critical, because all those nutrients that flow out are what has contributed to the red tide and all the other issues in other parts of the state, and that's the last thing we need here. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I I would like to commend Sean on this, because when I first saw this annexation issue, my first thought was that Mr. Belshi was going to use that to get around us, because we've been so strict, you know, on on buffers and everything at Bulow Creek, in addition to the water runoff to the to the north, in the north of the Palm Avenue issue. So the the work you're doing is much needed, and and keep it up. I mean, the chairman has said it correctly. We have to protect that, the headwaters of the Bulow Creek and everything. We must, and you've established, I think, the the right setbacks and buffer zones, and and just so keep keep up that fight. We need to have that.
Absolutely. I will do that, and for any of you that have ever seen Bulow Creek, it really is a treasure, and.
It is.
It's what the award behind you, it it's really what started off the culture in this county of preserving greenways and blueways, going back all the way to the early 90s. So I will additionally mention to the city commission and urge them to look into the issue of of stormwater and protecting the creek as much as possible.
All right, great. I really don't have anything else other than I would remind the residents to keep their attention focused on on our Father County Emergency Operations website, the Facebook page, and and our Flagler Weather Info is another one with up-to-date Flagler issues, Flagler news, instead of, sometimes I think if they share the Weather Channel or AccuWeather, we're not getting. Channel or AccuWeather, we're not getting that data that's relevant, right, to Flagler County from Flagler County folks that are doing the, doing the hard work to get that information out to everybody. It's, by the time we meet again,
Over.
We'll be, there'll be some damages. We'll be surveying hurricane-force winds. And then the, the hurricane-force winds, once it passes us, will be coming in from the ocean and battering the coast again. And, you know, so thankfully, we do have some additional protections on the south side, but the north side of the county is still under emergency dune protections. And, you know, so we're going to pray for their well-being up on the north end. And, and not that I wish bad on the south of Florida, but we'll keep blowing the storm south. But it's still, the effects, once it even gets out to the Atlantic and it wraps back around, it's, it's going to be devastating to us again. So.
We should point out that sandbags,
Right.
Varn Park and Bay Drive Park, I think, are the two places. Is that right, Heidi?
We have them at Bay Drive Park and we have them at Hidden Trails.
Oh, Hidden Trails.
Yeah, I was out at Hidden Trails yesterday.
And you can
They were doing a good job.
We don't have sandbags there or we do have sandbags there?
We have sand and sandbags. And I think the sheriff was going to provide some inmates to assist.
Right.
That's good. All right. Thanks.
All right. Thank you for adding that. Anything else?
No.
Okay.
Move we adjourn.
All right, I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, second. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate you being here.
Stay dry.